Real quick, I'm gonna read the public comment rules. And then we'll get started. So much like we did during our action hours, I'm gonna call your name out based on the screen name on the Zoom attendees list. Please use the raise your hand feature. After I call your name and we give you permission to speak on the platform, you'll have three minutes to address the board. I am trying to flash my timer in front of the camera so that you know when your time is running low. At the end of the three minutes, we will mute your mic. And if you need additional time, look for it and rent an additional minute. So I'm gonna read out the first three names that are on the list of attendees. We're gonna go first with Robert Moldiver? No, I'm sorry, we were gonna go to Bobby. Who had that earlier than taking out of line. So we're gonna start with Dobby Shalick and Robert Oliver. And then Molly Dinsmore. Bobby?
Hey, good evening. My name is Bobby Shalick. I am a six-seven social studies teacher at King Middle School. Can you guys hear me? Hello, folks, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Bobby.
Great, is there a crazy echo, though? Okay, there we go. Awesome. I just wanna thank you, members of the board and Superintendent Batana, for showing such resilience and leadership during this turbulent time. You've shown a tireless commitment to Portland Public Schools ideals of equity, achievement, enrichment, and now, safety. I wanna begin by stating very clearly, I don't feel safe returning to in-person instruction as a teacher, and I don't feel safe sending my children back into the classroom. That's my voice as a parent. When looking at the hybrid reopening plan being presented, a myriad of logistical questions arise for teachers and parents. And I think it's really important to pause and consider these questions. Consider their answers and the impacts of those answers, or the lack of answers. I've been a part of ongoing meetings and webinars regarding reopening with the Department of Education, our district, the PEA, and my own school, King Middle. Throughout these meetings, important and practical questions have emerged regarding social distancing, mask-wearing, discipline plans. How do we enter the school? Substitutes, and even the use of bathrooms for staff and students. These questions have been posed to school leaders, and often, these questions go unanswered, often because they are unanswerable. They cannot be adequately addressed, yet. These logistics, these lingering uncertainties regarding the plan for adherence to CDC guidelines for reopening schools, where do those uncertainties eventually land? Who answers those questions? Eventually, all unknown logistics will fall upon the shoulders of teachers, students, and parents. These questions will now be addressed in schools, at the front door, in classrooms or hallways, in real time by teachers, in the moment, teachers who are scared out of their minds. Teachers are being asked to take risks that are too large with possible consequences that are too grave. In some cases, transmission of COVID-19, or long-lasting health issues, or even death. I implore you, members of the board, prevent this from happening. Stop this public health experiment from taking place. Do not ask teachers to become frontline public healthcare workers. Do not ask our students to become guinea pigs in the midst of a prevailing pandemic. Please, begin the school year in a remote and safe setting. We did remote learning at the end of last year. We can get better at it. And we can more accurately ensure the safety of students and teachers with a remote start. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Next, we're going to Robert Moldiver.
Thank you. I appreciate your time this evening and your dedication. And I hope all of you and yours are well. I wanna start my comments with a sincere recognition of the incredibly thoughtful work you are all doing during this unprecedented, dangerous, divided, and uncertain time. I want to add that Superintendent Batana is to be highly commended on his leadership, as is Governor Mills, Commissioner Macon, the Portland School Board, and so many other people on the ground and behind the scenes who support our schools and students. I'm exceptionally proud to be a teacher in this district. My concerns fall into three prioritized categories. First is safety. Second is equity. And third is the continuum of education. I want to briefly address each point as it pertains so urgently to some of your decision-making in the shorter term. In brief, and to these urgent points, safety must come first. Much more time is needed to evaluate more data at a more granular, granular level to make a safe decision about reopening schools. The data of Cumberland County does not give this district enough granular-level data to safely bring children back into school. The risk of spreading this virus in the community is known to be significant, even by extrapolation from the county-level data. The risk is not worth it. Equity is the second urgent issue. As it pertains to health, the data is clear that this virus is impacting communities of color much more heavily than white communities. Here again, I want to commend Superintendent Batana for honestly addressing the substance of a question posed during last Friday's panel regarding the distinction between Cumberland County and Portland COVID data. The superintendent, towards the end of a particular section of that question, responded to that question, recognized and said that he was cognizant of the conundrum of wanting to prioritize services to students of color, and knowing that they are, because of the inequities of our society, they are likely to live in settings where they have a higher exposure to the virus. And he mentioned in other parts of that, primarily because these families are part of the essential workforce, that they are on these front lines and therefore being exposed to the virus where it is more prevalent. So as we struggle to address equity in academic achievement and opportunity for our students in these communities of color, we must not lose sight of the fact that the health of these communities is of the utmost importance. As an ELL teacher at King Middle School, I feel that we cannot risk having these very families potentially thrown into the abyss of personal and/or financial despair if a family member becomes ill, cannot work, and perhaps dies from this virus.
Robert, I need you to wrap it up, your time is up.
Thank you, yes, in half a moment. We can't work on fixing inequities in our communities and at the same time put a disproportionate number of families of color at greater risk. So to my third point quickly, the continuum of education. When we have an effective vaccine in place, that will be the time to make up the break in the continuum of education for our students.
Robert, I need you to wrap it up.
Thank you very much, and that will suffice. And I'll send you an email. I truly appreciate your time.
Thank you, really appreciate it. Next, we're going to, the next couple of names that are coming up are Molly Dinsmore, then we have Annie Dolphin, and Hamdiya Abnich. Molly?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. Unfortunately, I am sitting here in the dark where I am, we've lost some power. So thank you, School Board, for hearing me. Actually, all of you should have received an email from me today. What I'm actually addressing is the inequality for the IEP students, especially those that are graduating actually this year. After speaking with Superintendent Batana this afternoon, my son is not getting to walk due to the fact that his IEP was not upheld due to the COVID regulations and the No Child Left Behind Act. What I am asking is because of all the seniors that got everything taken away, is that the immediate action of the School Board actually be to rescind the graduation requirements in order to walk across the stage? Not to graduate, but to actually be able to participate within the graduation ceremonies that are set forth for tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday. I do not feel that due to the transition and the assurance of Superintendent Batana that many children with IEPs will not be graduating, but they are more than welcome to come back for a fifth year, as stated by today, which is not acceptable in any way, shape, or form. So I'm asking you, as a School Board, to step up, step forward, rescind the graduation requirements to walk across that stage and give back something to seniors who worked extremely hard, and especially for those who didn't fit into the box. Just because it didn't fit into a box and they weren't able to receive the help that they needed during their IEPs or their 504s does not make it acceptable to withhold them being able to participate in ceremonies. They have already lost proms. They have already lost senior breakfasts. They have lost their classmates. They have lost extracurriculars this entire year. The last thing you should be withholding is the seniors' ability to walk across that stage with their classmates. All know welling, they will actually have to still continue the graduation protocols afterwards to receive their actual diploma.
Molly, you're all done?
Yeah, but I'd like to hear from some of you guys, since I emailed every single one of you and only one of you bothered to email me back today. And gave me the.
Yep. So Molly, just real quick, the public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth. It would not be the best way to manage the time. I'm sure that we all received your email. And like you said, I would implore all to answer to all the emails that we received from our constituents. I appreciate that you waited a long time to speak. I just wanna remind the other folks who are waiting in the queue that the public hearings tonight is to speak on the reopening plan. I think that Molly's comments were obviously indicative of the challenges that we've had to face, that our families have had to face due to the school closure. So it felt like appropriate to have her continue her comments. But again, the people that are waiting on the queue, just again, to underscore that we are, this public hearing is specifically to hear your comments about the reopening plan that we were presented with tonight. Alright, so next, we're going to Annie Dolphin.
Hi, thank you so much. Good evening, my name is Annie Dolphin. I live on Bramhall Street. I'm also a teacher at Presum Scott. I was on the grades three through five work group, and I seconded the idea that everyone has worked so hard this summer. Maybe we keep the permanent sub-plan in the future to try and solve our subbing problem. I'm super proud of our district working so hard to keep staff safe. I will be coming back in person because I'm fortunate to not need an accommodation, but that also means that I would have to quit if I didn't wanna come back. So I am coming back out of responsibility to the job, but also my own financial security. I teach fifth grade. My students are preparing for middle school. As I do my usual summer work preparing to teach amazing content, I have a big question about technology that I hope is answered soon. I know everyone is sick of technology and is in screen overload. But I wanna be clear, there was a great reason you funded one-to-one Chromebooks in the upper elementary room classrooms in the years before we went remote. In order to plan my lessons for the hybrid scenario, I need to know soon what technology I will have in my classroom and what technology students will have when they're with their community partners. Are they going to bring their devices back and forth? I hope so, because I won't have them on the computer all that much during the school day. But if they don't bring them, then we won't be able to give computer assessments. And it will be necessary for me to create a new plan so that the typical learning that I do on the computer in the classrooms can be done without classroom computers. I have two other points to make, and they're both on the same size of one coin, enhanced PPE for elementary school teachers who say they need them. As the union rep for my school, I have been speaking with all the different grade levels. We all agree that we're not gonna be able to keep six-foot distance most of the time with our students. If you think about a pre-K classroom, a kindergarten classroom, all elementary classrooms, really, these are not workplaces where you can realistically keep six feet away from students. If the alternative is to hurt them emotionally by not letting them come close to you, most of my staff said they would support that student even if it breaks a requirement. They identified that this transgression would happen multiple times a day, every day. Therefore, we are all asking for face shields as well as face masks for elementary school teachers. This comes from the fifth state requirement about PPE, which is really following the science. Realistically, we need these as the requirement states, as additional safety precautions required for school nurses and/or any staff supporting students in close proximity when distance isn't possible or when students require physical assistance. These precautions must at a minimum include eye protection, which is face shields or goggles, and a mask covering. We don't have this, then we will have the kind of impossible choice to make, being hurtful to a child or putting the whole system at risk. The other side of the coin that we have.
Annie, do you need more time, or are you close to wrapping up?
I could have one more minute?
What?
The other side to this coin is that with face coverings and hopefully face shields, teachers are not gonna be our usual smiling selves. Well, we're gonna smile, but they won't be able to see it. I'm glad that we're doing the slow introduction to in-person learning. We need to educate parents and teach the students about the new way that teachers are gonna look, similar to how we teach them to not run away from firefighters during an emergency because they look different or scary. As Superintendent Batana said, families should start training their students now. I would suggest small increments of wearing the mask while doing everyday things around the house, practicing distancing three feet away from family members, eventually building up to five hours a day, with several mask breaks, of course. Families talk a lot about getting back to normal, but they should really know what this new normal at school is gonna look like and feel like from the child's perspective before they're committed to their choice to go hybrid. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Next, we're gonna go to Hamdiya Ahmed.
Hamdiya?
Hamdiya?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Hamdiya Ahmed. I am an activist here in Portland. I also have nieces and nephews that attend Portland Public Schools. I wanna make a comment tonight. From, I'm a part of BLM Maine, and we have been trying to make sure that there's remote learning for this year. So here's my comment. Portland Public Schools has stated that they support immigrants and the movement for Black Lives Matter. We are in the middle of a pandemic. Black people are affected by COVID at a higher rate than any other group here in the state of Maine and across the country. Portland Public School is saying that a survey was sent out. I have asked immigrant families about this survey, and some of them had no idea that this was such a thing. In fact, they are angry that the school district wants to reopen schools and put their children at risk. Families are trying to survive. The last thing that they need is for one of their own loved ones to get sick. What makes Portland Public Schools think that it is okay to reopen schools? Students will refuse to wear a mask. Children will not social distance. In fact, today, a school in Georgia was reopened, and the hallway was crowded, and students took off their masks. This proposal is not equitable for black, brown, and disabled students. Thirty percent of Portland Public Schools students are black. Twenty-seven percent, sorry, forty-seven percent of Portland Public Students are students of color. Cumberland County accounts for more than fifty percent of COVID cases in the state. Maine has the highest racial disparity of anywhere else in the United States. One in twenty-seven black Maynor has tested positive for COVID. Many families are immigrants living in multi-generational homes who already struggle to find homes where quarantine rooms are available for sick family members, jobs where they can work from home and remain unexposed while taking care of their children and elder. Some families do not have healthcare coverage. This proposal is not helping teachers as well. Despite getting fundings from CARE, this proposal offers no hazard pay to teachers. Even teachers in higher-risk jobs such as pre-K, elementary, and special education where maintaining social distance is not an option. Children have, will not, will not, will not wear a mask. They will take it off, and this will require teachers to help them. And teachers also have to be there to comfort them. This is not a good reason to be reopening Portland Public Schools this year. Put all of your political differences aside or whatever, and make sure that you put the safety of families and black people and immigrants and disabled people first. Please do not reopen schools. Let's have this year be remote learning. And this. Yes, I need more time, I need more time, one minute.
I can give you one more minute.
Black Lives Matter Maine, this is our call. We want a safe, community-based plan. We want a plan that honors the gravity and truth of this virus. We want a plan that goes slow to ensure our future. We want full remote learning for the fall of 2020. I'm done.
Thank you, Hamdiya. Next. Alright, next, we're gonna go to Haley Chase, then we have Krista Voe, Carrie Foster, and Jeremy Thyme.
Hi, my name is Haley Chase, and I'm here with my friends Vanessa Conley and Seneca Ward Bailey. We are all going to be juniors at Portland High School this fall. We want to give a perspective to people who will be very impacted by this decision. One big thing that high schoolers, especially juniors and seniors, will be impacted by is a disadvantage applying to and getting into colleges. If half of the students in the United States go back to school and Portland students do not, we will be at a disadvantage in getting into college. We will have a lack of resources and help for AP classes and SAT testing, especially when it comes to tests and lack of support from guidance counselors, and when it comes to college applications. Another thing that kids will benefit from, from being in person, are the connections they make with their teachers. When the three of us were freshmen, we created a very strong bond with one of our teachers. To this day, we are very close with her, and she's helped us transition through high school. It is also important to create a close bond with teachers for college recommendation letters. Students will not be able to create a strong bond needed for these letters through a screen. One more important thing about being in person is that students need these life-changing high school experiences to grow as an individual, find themselves, and create life goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so next, we're going to Krista Voe.
Hi, my name is Krista Voe, and I live at 308 Danforth Street. I have four children who attend Reiki School, and I'm also the current Reiki PTO president. I just wanna start by telling a story about an experience that my ten-year-old had this summer. She turned ten in June, and we invited two friends to our backyard for a socially distant birthday celebration. And afterwards, she was in tears because the reality is that life is not how it was. And she said it was easier to not see her friends than to actually be with her friends and have it be so different and so hard and not be able to be together the way that they are used to. So I just wanna give that perspective of hers. I also want to make the point, as several others have, that Portland is unique in Maine. We have a very high percent of black indigenous people of color as students. And they are disproportionately affected by COVID, as we all know. And I think we need to take that into account because Portland does not reflect Cumberland County. We are, our numbers look very different. Another issue in Portland that we've become aware of in the past few years is that our buildings have been underfunded and under-maintained for years. And specifically at Reiki, we have a ventilation problem already. We have interior classrooms without windows. We have no walls in the building except for a few classrooms. These are problems that have been for years, and it's only exacerbated by this public health crisis that we're facing now. I don't see a good way to be in that building at all. I just don't, it does not seem safe. I also want to mention that we were told this year that the priority for the budget is addressing the opportunity gap. And from what I've seen, speaking to different parents, a lot of wealthier affluent white families will be keeping their children home because they have the means to do so. And that leaves only poor children and children of color in the classrooms where the focus will be on handwashing and making sure that masks are on. And maybe not a lot of learning happening. I just don't see how that will help address the opportunity gap. I only see it widening if that is the case. And lastly, I just wanna say that I trust our teachers, and they are the ones that spend all this time with our children when they're in school. They're the experts, and they don't feel comfortable going back. And I think we need to respect that. They are going to be there every day with our kids if we send them back. And they're the ones who are going to be possibly getting sick if our kids go to school with symptoms or even without symptoms and end up infecting their teachers. So I really just wanna emphasize that.
Krista, are you up? Krista, are you up?
I'm done. That's it.
Thank you, Krista. Alright, next, we're gonna go to Carrie Foster.
Hi, I'm Carrie Foster. I'm president of the Portland Education Association, and I live on Danforth Street in Portland as well. First, like many of the board members mentioned tonight, I'd like to acknowledge a few things. Number one being that this is an impossible situation for which any conceivable plan involves components that put either staff, students, or both in danger. And we know that. Number two, that Superintendent Batana and his team have been working incredibly hard and in collaboration with staff at all levels to come up with the best possible collection of plans under the circumstances, and we're very grateful for that. I think that, I've been reading through the comments too, and it's just, it's... We wanna thank the community for the level of trust, and we wanna thank the central office and the board for the level of trust and respect that we're getting in terms of helping create these plans. And number three, people all over our community are losing sleep over the prospect of what any of these decisions could mean for them. And to that point, we're with you. The PEA is with you. We're devastated at the prospect of not being able to return with any scenario in business as usual. And we overwhelmingly want it to be as safe as it was last August, to be face-to-face with our students, working with them, their social and emotional and physical and academic skills. But that being said, as you've heard a little bit already tonight, we don't feel we can safely do this in September. The PEA polled our members after learning of the proposal to start in a hybrid scenario. And there were far too many concerns about conclusive science, facilities readiness, personal and household health issues, and the idea that would be putting our most vulnerable families at higher risk from exposure by seeing them in person. Requirements are not. There are going to be mask miscaps, as we've heard. And as we've seen tonight, keeping a mask on while talking can be hard, and understanding a person talking in a mask can also be difficult. And the educators who see a crying child or a shoe untied, they're just not gonna be able to stay distant. So yes, we do have staff members who are ready and willing to return even under these difficult circumstances. Some have reservations, others feel pretty low risk. But at the same time, my inbox has been full, as I'm sure yours has, with the anguish of teachers, specialists, ed techs who are weighing the risk of contracting a potentially fatal infection or giving it to a loved one versus what it would mean for their families if the most prudent decision is to leave the profession altogether. So for these reasons, I'm advocating that for the next few weeks, we put our resources into planning for opening as well as we can remotely, continuing the upgrade and retrofitting of buildings and ventilation, evaluating Maine's evolving situation, and monitoring districts that open around the country so we can learn from their successes and mistakes. I know it's difficult and I know a lot of thought has been put into this. It's not to say we don't appreciate it, but this is, this is our advocacy at this moment. So thank you for everything you've been doing and for this consideration.
Thank you, Carrie. Next, so the next three people that are on the list, we're gonna go to Jeremy Stein, then Dan Mueller, then Michael Brooks. Jeremy?
Hi there. My name is Jeremy Stein and I've lived in Portland since 1998. I've owned a house here in Portland since 2000. I have two daughters, age 15 and 17, who have gone through the Portland Schools from Reiki to King and Portland High School. We appreciate everything the schools department has done, including this incredibly challenging decision that they are faced with right now. I am a teacher in the surrounding district and I understand all the complexities and factors that go into these decision-making processes. I'm here tonight to speak about my concerns for the 10th to 12th graders and how they, under this hybrid plan, are going to be 100% virtual while the rest of the district is in a hybrid, in-person, and at-home. This is wildly unfair to those older students and will set them back greatly. While it's true that the older students may be home alone, as opposed to younger students, there are a host of other issues that must be considered. An all-virtual school is not education. Other towns, surrounding towns, are offering hybrid models for all grades. Portland students deserve the same educational opportunities. The plan for grades 10 to 12 is 100% virtual. This is not fair, nor is it good educational practice. They need in-person instructions. The students already spend way too much of their time on the screen. They need peer support and peer interactions. How can AP Bio or Chemistry be taught without hands-on experiments? How can students be expected to digest complex literature while looking at a screen? They need real-time instruction from someone who can see them and see their needs. Coming to school even two days a week provides critical structure. Kids need structure. Learning centers that you've talked about in this plan are not direct instruction with their own teachers. I've also heard that one of the problems is that coming 10th, 12th grade students is because their schedules are too complex to figure out. If this is the case, then you're assigning them to be virtual for the entire year. What will change to allow them to come back to the school if their schedules are too complex? All the surrounding districts have been able to figure this out. Can a schedule be worked out where they're with their core classes in person? Perhaps math, English, science, social studies, I say as a social studies teacher, should be in person. Most parents and students would choose to have some in-person classes, even if it means losing some of their elective classes. Our numbers are low in the state. We're not talking about Florida and Georgia. We're doing better than most other states. Sarah Botano mentioned that this would last until the semester break in January. That is far too long to sacrifice our eldest student's educational opportunities without the necessary structure. I believe this Mr. Burke who mentioned this, a new survey, asking parents of the 10th to 12th graders specifically, do they want in-person hybrid classes or all virtual? Please survey us again. And again, thank you for your service and your time. I know this is an incredibly difficult decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremy. Alright, we'll go to Dan Mueller.
Hi, this is Dan Mueller. I live at Fallbrook Street in Portland. I have two daughters enrolled at Ocean Avenue Elementary. I'm a former public school teacher in New York City and Chicago and I have 18 years of international public health and disaster response experience. I fully realize our schools are being asked yet again to solve larger societal crises that cannot be solved by schools alone. We are familiar with these, immigration, poverty, healthcare. But I believe that the hybrid and in-person options fail to keep students and staff safe. I've been happy to hear openness and willingness to increase outdoor learning, but it's been difficult to hear any firm commitments beyond mention of two classrooms per school. I believe there is another option than the options offered tonight, which is having outdoor-only classes, which I believe have both broader support and available resources than has been recognized so far by this committee this evening. We cannot expect educators and administrators to be public health experts, but we can ask them to be organizers. They organize their classrooms, their students, and their complex facilities on a daily basis. We can expect the Portland Public School system to organize parents, donors, and school systems to offer an optional outdoor learning option. Any delays by Portland Public Schools in implementing outdoor learning opportunities will prove to be a critical mistake. There will soon be supply chain shortages for necessary equipment and supplies. This equipment is basic, affordable, and readily available now. To be clear, I'm not suggesting some classes are outside some of the time. Outdoor-only learning, where students only attend class outside, should be available to the vast majority of students, even if schedules change and school days are shortened. Remote learning can supplement students' education when weather prevents outdoor gatherings. We stated tonight that 200 of, 230 teachers surveyed are very interested in outdoor learning. Please listen to the 87% of teachers, along with the parents and public health professionals who are advocating for advancing outdoor classrooms immediately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Alright, next we're going to Michelle Brooks.
Hi, my name is Robert Brooks. I'm a parent of a 10th grader at Portland High School. And I have a comment and a question. My first comment relates to my position that the remote-only treatment of students in grades 10, 11, and 12 is unnecessarily cautious and likely to permanently hurt these students' long-term learning goals, as some previous commentators have noted. I was struck by the superintendent's comments that the science does not warrant keeping kids out of school. He also said the data says we can do that safely. We also know the state, the Maine Department of Education, the Maine CDC have all given the green light to in-person education. There has been no rational reason put forward to exclude grades 10, 11, and 12 from the hybrid plan. And this, and this plan contradicts these positions that have been accepted by the district. If the governor's green light for Portland to conduct in-person education for five days a week isn't enough to justify allowing grades 10, 11, and 12 to have in-person education at any level, if the state of Maine's status is having one of the lowest infection rates in the country isn't enough to allow grades 10, 11, and 12 in-person education, note that as of today, the positive percentage, positive rate of COVID tests is 0.7%. The lowest Maine has ever seen. And as of today, we're five new cases for the entire state. So if those two factors are not enough for the city of Portland to include grades 10, 11, and 12 in any form of hybrid education that has in-person learning, what specific data points or circumstances is the district waiting for to allow grades 10, 11, and 12 to return to in-person learning in any capacity? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. So, uh, next three people, next three people that are on the queue are Sarah Sweeney, Sarah Brydon, and then we have Elizabeth Capone Enriquez. Sarah Sweeney?
Hi, yeah, this is Sarah Sweeney. I live on Deepwood Drive. I have a, we have a kid at Lyceum and a kid at Moore. And at first I want to say thank you to everybody who's done so much work and trying to figure out how to start school again. I think, you know, we ideally want that, but we want to make sure that it's done safely. And I just want to say the thing that really stood out for me in tonight's presentation was the number of teachers who really don't feel that it's safe to return to school. And that concerns me because if they don't feel safe in school, how are they going to teach effectively? So I think exploring the outdoor classrooms is really important. There needs to be more than two per school, if it's possible. And also, I want to reiterate, sorry, what, um, turn that off. The, that teacher from Presumsket said is that, you know, I worry that the teachers are gonna, they're not going to be able to keep that six feet of distance that is required. So I think just when you're making your decision, please keep all of these things in mind. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll go to Sarah Brydon.
Hey there, can you hear me? Wonderful. So I have two kiddos that are going to be starting at Talbot for kindergarten this fall. And so I, I just, a couple moments, I want to thank everybody for all of your hard work. This is such a horrible situation. I really appreciate all the effort everybody's put in. But I, I want to just be another voice supporting the idea of outside learning. It's not ideal. It's super different, super challenging, I get it. But it just, it feels like it has got to be better than a host of other horrible alternatives. And I, so I would just really, really encourage everybody involved to do as much as possible to pursue outside learning. And also just let us in the community know how we can help. I mean, this is the only concept that has given me any hope at all in the past couple of weeks. And I am so motivated to help. Let us know how we can help. Outside learning and thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you, Sarah. Alright, we'll go to Elizabeth Capone. Then the next two people after Elizabeth are Sarah Obear and Savannah Miri Solas Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. And I'm pretty sure I'll need the last minute, so you can just cut me off at four if you're comfortable with that. My name's Elizabeth Capone Enriquez, or Capone Newton. I live on North Street, where there's a will, there's a way. And you can't take back harm once, once it's been done. I have a master's in public health from Columbia University. I'm the former coordinator of the school-based health centers in Portland. I started studying epidemics 20 years ago when I took my first class about the HIV epidemic at the University of Southern Maine at Lewiston Auburn. From 2007 to 2012, I worked full-time as a public health researcher at Columbia University while getting my master's in public health. My mentor, she taught, one of the books she taught us is by Wallace and Wallace. It's called A Plague on Your Houses. It's about how four different public health epidemics started in essentially the South Bronx because resources were withheld from those communities and epidemics spread. And they very quickly spread to wealthy areas and through the whole country. And that's because even though we have deep segregation, our lives are actually connected and we interact with each other every day. I think our schools are a good example of how that could happen. It's okay to say that. We have a mostly white teacher workforce that does not all live in Portland. And we have a near-majority student of color, student population. And what that means is that the disproportionate harm that's already been done to Black Indigenous and people of color communities in terms of the COVID epidemic, it can easily be something that starts to affect white people and upper-middle-class people who've been able to buffer themselves from it. I care about all those people. This is something that we have to understand happens. It's how epidemics work. We have a responsibility to protect everybody, the most vulnerable first. Like I said, where there's a will, there's a way. There's not a contradiction between having safety equity and a continuum of education. We can do all three. It's really important, I think Adam Burke addressed this with one of his questions. It's really important that we understand what state government resources are available so that we protect the extra resources because we're going to need extra resources. I am not worried about how the school is going to spend $6 million or whatever it is by December 31st. If the district needs advice about how to spend that money, the community is going to be able to give it. There's going to be so many ways and more. States have, every state has a childcare subsidy program. That is how low-income people, myself included, are able to have babies and find a place for them to be cared for, zero to five.
Just give that 10 seconds to go.
And that program goes to age 13. So I'm asking everybody to make sure that low-income parents know about the childcare subsidy program. It's going to be the way that they get to have nannies and daycares and protect their children too. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next, we're gonna go to Sarah Obear.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Sarah Obear. I live at 37 Birchwood Drive. I have two children in Portland Public Schools, an elementary student and a high school student, grade 10. And I'm the ninth-grade team leader at Portland High School. I'm going to jump right in and speak my, most of my three minutes about what we're asking of ninth-grade teachers and ninth-grade students and hope that it helps the board better understand ninth grade. And I will say, I do not believe that ninth grade is any different than 10 through 12th in our ability to keep them safe. And I'll jump in and tell you why. First, about our teachers, the current model for ninth grade will have teachers, ninth-grade teachers, teaching in three different modalities at the same time. So potentially 11%, if you trust the survey data, of our students might choose fully remote. That's about 23 students for Portland High. Our teachers will need to teach four days of remote lessons for those 23 students. They'll also be asked to teach in-person four days a week with half of their students. And I'll explain what that looks like in a second. So four days a week, they're going to have half of their in-person students. They'll prepare lessons, they'll teach them in-person. At the same time, the third thing they'll have to juggle is that they will have half of their students at home doing remote learning and they'll have to produce four days a week lessons for those students. So three different things happening all at the same time is what we're asking teachers to do in this model. And I will just speak quickly that this meeting highlights why you can't do some of those things at the same time. It's really hard to teach students in-person with a mask on while at the same time using Zoom or something else to communicate with students that are not in-person. The best current medical understanding is that teens do spread this virus the same as adults. So to the students, currently our understanding is that we would bring 100 students into Portland High School, 50 students per team. We have two teams of teachers. There'd be 50 students. So when Erin speaks to cohorts of kids and what that looks like at the high school level for grade nine, we're talking 50 students that are going to interact on that daily basis. There's no way around this. Students take honor science, college prep, history, and English, and maybe have a supported math. And that may look very different than the other student that started out in their honor science class. Those 50 students are going to interact. And only those 50 students, if you don't also factor in transportation, like the metro, passing time in the hallways, the bathrooms, and the afternoon time, which is learning center time for kids to drop in with their teachers, academic support, ELL support will happen in those times. So by the time you look at that, there'll be much more than those 50 students that have interacted.
Sarah, are you almost done? Your time is up.
I can try to be and I can send more in an email. So I will take one more minute and if I miss anything, I will email you. Also, we have no plan for teachers to rotate, so those students would rotate throughout the building, interacting with different teachers. We need to know how many students are going to choose to do fully remote because maybe we would organize teams of teachers in a different way if we knew that it was 50% versus 11%. Maybe one team of teachers would teach in-person while the other team would do remote. But then it becomes this question, how do I choose? How do I, as the team leader, choose who to put in-person and who can teach remotely? How do I decide between that? Just like how do we decide which students to choose and put in front of us? Please do not consider... Please do not consider the compromise or a safe middle ground to be a hybrid model. Think about, is it doable for teachers? Can teachers sustain it? What will actual pedagogy look like when you ask teachers to do all of these things at the same time? My suggestion, do remote learning for instruction. Let us figure out ways to build relationships with kids in-person. Teach courses like AP Biology. How do we figure that out? And how do we support those students that have trouble accessing remote learning? We can figure that out without blanketly saying all ninth graders are going to go in the building. Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to go to Savannah Mirisola Sullivan.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Savannah Mirisola Sullivan. I live in the Rosemont neighborhood, and this will be my fifth-year teaching elementary school in Portland Public Schools. These last three months, we've witnessed powerful moments of solidarity across the country in support of the Black Lives Matter uprising. Central to this movement is the demand to defund the police. That work begins by abolishing the police within our hearts and heads. What I mean when I say that is that we must notice when we are criminalizing our neighbors rather than listening and practicing empathy. We must notice when we are relying on compliance and surveillance rather than the health and well-being of our communities. In preparing myself for a new school year, that mindset must be central to my work as a teacher. It is through that lens that I speak to you tonight. Earlier tonight, we heard the superintendent and other members of central office speak at length about the medical safety of returning to school within a hybrid model. They cited data point after data point to ensure us of our physical safety. But they did not talk about the emotional safety of students within this model. The fear that keeps gripping me as a teacher is that within this model, my primary role will be to police students. My focus would be on compliance. Put your mask on. Stop touching that student's materials. Only one drop of hand sanitizer. Wash your hands. Use hot water. No, you cannot drink water right now. No, you cannot eat right now. No, you cannot use the bathroom. Please step back. Put your mask on. Wash your hands. You're too close to me. You're too close to your friend. Put your mask on. Wash your hands. That's not your pencil. That's not your paper. You can only touch your computer. Put your mask on. Take that out of your mouth. Please step back. No, I cannot give you a hug even though you are crying. No, you cannot give me a hug even though you're proud. Put your mask on. Put your mask on. Put your mask on. This is not teaching. This is not hands-on learning. This is not collaboration or practice for democratic citizenship. This is compliance. This is policing. This is surveillance. This is the work of SROs who we actively worked to remove from our schools at the beginning of the summer. This is in direct opposition to the work of the Black Lives Matter movement. Quite frankly, I consider myself to be skilled at social-emotional teaching and learning. That is because I censor it in all that we do within our classroom community. It is the vehicle through which all learning takes place. And so I hear the superintendent's push for the criticality of social-emotional learning amidst this enormous and unprecedented crisis during which students are frightened and isolated. But within the confines of the absolutely necessary CDC guidelines, the scenarios I described above will preclude all social-emotional safety, and thus no learning will take place. Teachers will replace SROs in our schools, and that is not a job I'm willing to do. I urge you to support remote teaching for the fall trimester where we can make meaningful social-emotional learning happen in innovative ways. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Savannah. The next three speakers, we're going to call Jen Grant and Ashley Daniels and Zev Bliss. Jen?
Hello?
Hello.
Hi there. My name is Jennifer Grant, and I live on Webb Street in Portland. My children attend Row School and both have IEPs. Additionally, my children are unable to attend any form of in-person learning due to medical reasons. And I think you are making a grave mistake in choosing to send any children or teachers back to school in this dangerous time. I do not see this proposal as equitable in any way to people of color, remote learners versus in-person learners, and especially special education students. I have written to the board, the superintendent, and the special education director regarding my feelings and concerns about the proposed return-to-school plan for remote learners. Board member Adam Burke addressed some of my, some of the contents of my email earlier in the meeting. And I would really like to push for clarification. I realize that you cannot do that right now, but I will be reaching out further regarding the answers that he was given. My children have lost so much over these past few months. And the last thing that they need is to feel pushed out of their row community and to be expected to develop new relationship with different teachers and special educators as well as other students within their community. This is not the time to be dividing and segregating the community. Malia's response to Adam's question was that they would try to align remote learning students with their teachers from their home school. But shortly thereafter, Javier stated moments later that he meant to create a new community made up of all the remote learners and the teachers. So which is it? In order to make an informed decision about the fall, I think that parents deserve to hear that answer. I would like to know how my children's needs and their IEPs will be met through remote learning and how you plan to make learning equitable for all students in this district. Thank you.
Okay, so next, we're going to go to Ashley Daniels.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name is Ashley Daniels. I live on Barclay Ave, and I am a rising junior at Portland High School. I strongly believe that all grades need to return to school in the fall, just not some of them. I don't like the six-hour schedule for high school students, saying that we only have three hours of classes and then three hours for the learning center where we can go in for extra support, whether it be academic or for social-emotional needs. Personally, in my classes, personally, I need my classes to be in-person. I think that if elementary schools can go back full-time in October and have middle schoolers that can go in half of the time, then high schools should be able to fit more than just freshmen in the buildings just a few days of the week. In the fall, I'm taking four AP classes. This will be my most important academic school year and my hardest. I cannot settle for three hours of instruction and expect to be motivated at home to engage in the learning center where I would only be in school for minimal time. I need to go back to school at least part-time. I know nobody wants the quality of education to slide during this pandemic, but sadly it is. Remote learning is not effective, and it is not a long-term solution for keeping 10th through 12th graders learning effectively. We need in-person instruction too. There are a lot of students who won't do their work. There are a lot who won't show up for the learning center who actually need it. We need in-person instruction. Remote learning will not do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. All right, so the next, we're going to go to Zev Bliss. And the next three people following Zev are Adnan Umar, Rachel Pargeter, and Sarah Northworthy. Zev?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I've taught in private school classrooms for the last two years. And my current on-paper plan is to be a student teacher in Portland Public this year. When we reopen, to echo what Annie Dolphin said earlier, teachers will need PPE. Specifically, I'd like to request that a product called the Humanity Shield, Modified Face Shield with fabric around it be made available to any teacher that would like one. Face shields don't offer enough protection. And masks, even with vinyl windows, are not a workable solution. Even setting aside social, emotional, and trauma issues, we can't teach early literacy and phonics with masks on. But we cannot reopen in-person or hybrid until the county has had zero new cases for 14 days. I absolutely agree with Savannah who just spoke. Physical and social-emotional safety will absolutely be in conflict with one another. Students with IEPs will fall through the cracks. I also want to echo Hamdia's call for equity and safety. There are enormous racial and socioeconomic class inequities in virus impact. And Maine has the most dramatic racial virus inequity in the nation. Do we really think this won't get even worse with large daily gatherings of people in schools? Over a quarter of teachers in Portland are over 55, and we just heard from the PEA. The science is clear, and teachers don't feel safe. I've seen many of my most talented and experienced colleagues decide to leave the profession for their safety and the safety of the community. We need to value safety of students and teachers. And I'm sorry, I don't accept the view that we're clear to return in-person. If the people making that call were incorrect, then our failed state of the nation would not be on track to have over half of global COVID numbers. We've been very lucky in Maine to have low COVID numbers. But this is largely due to chance, and we will be giving it all up by reopening schools prematurely. It's a lot easier to bring a child up to grade level than it is to bring back the dead or to work through the trauma of bringing a virus home from school that infects or kills a parent or grandparent. Now I want to focus on teachers. I've seen the setups of teachers planning for this year, a laptop with the lesson plan and notes, an extended monitor behind it with a Zoom call for remote students. Next to that, a document camera connected to the Zoom call and a projector so everyone can see the assignment. And behind the desk, a desiccated classroom with distance desks for the rotation of students that will be in-person and will also need to be taught and managed. That is unlivable. The average age of a teacher in Maine is 46, and again, over a quarter of teachers in the state are 55 or older. The starting salary of a teacher in this district is $39,000. We love and care for students more than parents ever know, but we are professionals. And we are people that need to be valued too. My district, oh, sorry, we're sending teachers in to die, asking them to do the work of three professionals and slapping them in the face on the way. And where the current plan is to dramatically increase the complexity of interaction networks, which will absolutely promote viral spread. Thank you.
Thank you, Zev. We're going to go to Adnan Umar.
Hello, everyone. Can you guys hear me? All right. So my name is Adnan Umar. I live on South Grafton Street. I recently moved here around the end of last year. My daughter is going to start kindergarten this year. And I totally agree with Savannah. Right now, my daughter is in love with learning new things. She wants to get that education, but the way we're starting off, starting kindergarten is, again, you need to get the kid comfortable with the environment, with a new way of learning. And with these social distancing and all those practices in place and the policing, as Savannah said, I don't think, I think they'll start to hate to get educated rather than moving forward with this. So I would, apart from all this, I would also like to give a general comment. I myself am a project manager, so I look at everything in terms of a whole project. First of all, I really appreciate all the effort that's been put in in making this plan. And I know we're in sort of an impossible situation. We've heard different point of views from everyone here, but there's one thing which everyone agrees to, that opening is a risk. It may, whatever we do here is going to reduce that risk, but the risk is going to be there. But, and eventually, a situation will come up where there is someone who gets infected. Maybe it's a direct person who gets infected. Maybe it's in someone, a kid's family, someone infected. It's an indirect relation. But there, we don't, we've not been given enough information of what the protocol is going to be when those things happen. It's, it looks like we don't want to take the responsibility of that, and we're just, I understand it's a medical profession, people who should be making that decision. But I would encourage you guys to push them to give you a guideline on that before opening rather than looking at it as it comes. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Adnan. Next, we're going to go to Rachel Pargeter.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. It's Pargeter, but that's fine. I just want to make a comment that, in my opinion, we are not ready to go forward with this plan. I think it disparately affects too many groups in ways that we have not fully explored. It negatively affects people of color. It appears to positively affect freshmen in high school. It appears to disadvantage sophomores through seniors. But we haven't figured out exactly how that is all going to work. There is no standard for when 10th to 12th graders would be able to go back. It almost seems like the, the planning, and I understand it's exhaustive, and I understand everybody, it's a tremendous amount of work. It's a very difficult situation. But we are trying to make a situation that is inherently unsafe into a situation that is safe, when we don't actually know what the safety is. Teachers are terrified. Students going on the buses and having to wear masks and being constantly yelled at, or, I'm sorry, not yelled at, or constantly directed are not going to like the learning scenario. And the survey that came out, many people didn't answer, and it did not allow answers for more than one child. I have one child I would send back, one child I would not, because they're different children. I don't think we're ready. I think we need to start remote and figure out a plan that is more equitable for everybody. The 10th to 12th kids, the freshman teachers that are going to be trying to do something impossible, the kindergarteners teachers that are going to be trying to do something impossible. If everybody is scared and traumatized, it is not going to be a good experience for anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay, next, we're going to go to Sarah Northworthy.
Good evening. Thank you all for still being here for these late, late meetings. I had the privilege of serving on the 3-5 work group. I teach fourth grade at Reiki. And I am invested in getting our kids back into the best environment we can. But Savannah said it so well for us, for so many of us. A teacher's job is not to police student bodies, and this is what we risk. The cost of not policing children's bodies may be placing the unconscionable burden of unwittingly passing along a devastating virus with, as yet, lifelong unknown complications to their teachers or their friends. We teachers do not often put ourselves first. We give ourselves to this profession, often to our own detriment. It takes a great deal for us to speak up, and we are, on behalf of ourselves. But my hunch is, most of us are really speaking up on behalf of our students. What will return-to-school look like for teachers, for students? I and many of you, I'm sure, have seen the videos of schools set up for learning. What will ours look like? Before you decide, before you vote, please hop on the bus, wait in line three feet apart to wash your hands, sit at a desk three feet from your friends, all facing the same direction when you were used to sitting in groups. Notice that there are no books you can go over and pick up to remind yourself of a moment with a classmate or a teacher last year. There are no collaborative drawings, no giggling in the corners, no special secret handshakes, no hugs. Look at the classroom. Is this what we want for our students? Is this what is best for them? We teachers implore you to try this out yourselves before you vote and get a sense of what we are truly asking. We don't yet know, but we are working on if and when we can use books, paper. What will students be doing in school? If social-emotional learning is what we are emphasizing, are we accomplishing it by opening up in this manner? We don't have the details yet, but more than ever, details matter. Will opening with an almost inevitable red scenario in the future and having to switch to remote be in the best interests of our students and of our teachers? We left school in remote. Could we please return that way? Can we get this right so that our students have additional consistency? Please don't hold against all of us the errors that we made in trying to switch to emergency remote learning on 48 hours of notice. We did a great job for so many of our students. We talk a lot about the students that, that didn't show up, that weren't present. We don't talk as much about the ones that do. If you, if and when you talk to us about the students that showed up for learning, the kinds of differentiation we were able to do, the connections we were able to make, we can build on our successes. And we can do so staying safe and protecting our children from risks that we do not yet understand. I ask you to especially consider Reiki. The population, our children.
Sarah, are you, are you almost done?
Just consider, consider Reiki. We have windows that open. We don't have screens. We don't have walls. We have carpets. Just consider, consider Reiki. We have windows that open. We don't have screens. We don't have walls. We have carpets. I know you're thinking about it, but please just give us extra, extra attention as we think and hear from our families that are talking about forming pods that are going to be leaving some children in learning environments with peers and others behind. Think about the world we're creating for our children in our schools and if it's what we want for them. And thank you for your time and all of the work. It's been a privilege to work on it alongside of you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, next, we're going to go to Holly Sheehan. And the next three people after Holly are Priya Natarajan, Erin Chase, and Gabby Daniels.
Hi, this is Holly Sheehan. I live on Washington Avenue. And I have a 10th grader at Portland High School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am worried about the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. With only remote instruction, I'm concerned that my sons, that he'll become disconnected from his teachers and his peers and his schooling. And that this will result in setbacks in his learning. I'm worried that he, he and his peers will suffer in their social and emotional health and that he will be less motivated to achieve academically. If the district is going to allow every other grade level to go to a hybrid model, I urge you to find a way to allow our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders access to some in-person education, particularly at a time when the Maine CDC has given a green light for schools to return to school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Holly. We'll go to Priya.
Hi there. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. So my name is Priya Natarajan and I reside on Colonial Road in Portland. I'm the mother of a casco 11th grader and I'm a casco 10th grade teacher and a PEA member. I want to thank the district, my colleagues, and my union for our work this summer that will allow me to go back to school to do the job that I love. When I answered the PEA teacher survey about going back to work, I marked not sure. And I want to tell you the singular reason why. In grades 10 through 12, we work with students who are often actually adults or within one or two years of adulthood. And therefore, I'm extremely concerned about the district's current resources on testing. That's COVID-19 testing. As we have seen from other school reopenings around the country, it's only a matter of time before a student or staff member or both requires testing or quarantine. At our recent PEA meeting, we were told by the physician for our district that only symptomatic individuals would have access to testing and that we would not have access to rapid testing. When we come into contact with a COVID-19 positive individual, our only option will be to seek out testing on our own and wait for results to return. As someone with health insurance and a car, this will not be a problem for me or my son. When I think about the many students without either one of those privileges, I grow angry. In-person education for equity will not last long when our least advantaged students have to quarantine for 14 days due to lack of testing, but more advantaged students come back more quickly. If the community wants us to open more fully, in particular for these older teenagers that I teach who transmit COVID-19 similarly to adults, it needs to assist us in a more comprehensive way with testing. Other communities seem to have mobile labs with rapid tests, but even with the number of local medical institutions, we do not seem to have this. If we could improve this element of our plan along with adding more nurses so that each campus would actually have a nurse present at all times, I would personally feel safer to return. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next, we're going to go to Erin Chase.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Erin Chase. I live at 6 Deepwood Drive. I have three children, one who attends Lyseth, another Moore, and another Portland High School. I also have dedicated 28 years to a career in education myself. I was not planning to speak tonight, but after listening to some of the comments, I wanted to be a voice of support for returning to in-person learning in Portland. I appreciate tonight's presentation by the superintendent, by Superintendent Potana and his team. And I also want to express my sincere gratitude to the administration and other staff who have worked tirelessly on developing this very comprehensive plan, which included data and clear rationale for decision-making. Developing a plan to address educational practices has been, among COVID, has been stressful and polarizing in our community. As we look to returning to in-person learning, I wonder what we can learn from daycares, camps, and organized private sporting organizations who have worked with groups of children safely and in close proximity. I feel that the plan for opening later in the school year, the pre-K 5 and middle school hybrid plans are reasonable and well thought out. I very much appreciate that the district has identified a date to assess the ability to return to in-person learning or not for both phase levels. I also appreciate that siblings would attend on the same days in hybrid scenarios. I continue to have concerns with the plan for high school students in grades 10 through 12. I do understand the idea of contact tracing and some of the challenges of doing that with the greater likelihood of multiple contacts in courses and upper grades. I would like to know how other high schools have facilitated plans to have high school students attend at least in a hybrid scenario while feeling comfortable with the ability to contain the disease through contact tracing. Is it possible that Portland Public Schools could consider and learn from other models from the local districts? In conclusion, I support the proposed plan offered to the board for consideration with an amendment to include a hybrid plan for 10th to 12th graders. Thank you again for the hard work involved in this decision-making.
Thank you, Erin. Let's go to Gabby Daniels. And then we have two more people waiting after Gabby. We have Andrea Lovinski and Emily Shalas.
Hello.
I'm mute.
Hello, Erin.
Hi, I'm Gabby Daniels. I live on Barclay Ave. As an incoming junior at Portland High School, I believe it's crucial we have in-class instruction time. Many juniors enroll in AP and honors classes. And without having some in-person instruction, it'll be extremely difficult to learn. Learning college-level classes over a computer screen is not the same as in-person lessons. High schoolers are pushing closer and closer to college and it is vital our education is not jeopardized by remote learning as we prepare for furthering our education outside of the PPS district. After my own personal experience in talking with fellow PPS high schoolers this spring, showed me how remote learning every single day is not effective. It was highly repetitive and we did not learn as much as we do in class. It was harder to follow along with the teachers as well. I believe a minimum of two days of in-person instruction for all grades, especially high schoolers edging towards college, should be considered for in-person instruction. I believe it's beneficial for all students to have access to in-person instruction. If K through nine has the choice to return to in-class instruction, why is it that grades 10 through 12 don't have the opportunity as well? The days could be staggered by grades to, to limit the amount of students in school. And of course, following all the CDC guidelines and restrictions is a very little thing for us all to do when it comes into the whole perspective of the students' educations that are on the line. I think that students should have the choice to either return or not to go back. And the students that actually want to go back and learn with a teacher in a classroom should be able to that are in grades 10 through 12. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabby. Go to Andrea Lovinski.
Hello, my name is Andrea Lovinski and I am the Extended Learning Opportunities Coordinator at Portland High School and I reside in South Portland. I'd like to echo the thoughts of my colleague Sarah Obary and ask you to reconsider the prioritization of ninth graders for in-person instruction in addition to special ed and IELD students. I'm hoping and I'm guessing, but want to make sure that IELD and special ed students would still be able to get that choice to be fully remote if their families so chose that. As we've heard from Black Lives Matter activists and supporters, especially regarding the disproportionate number of black people in Maine who, and in the country, who have COVID-19. I think we could think a little bit more creatively about who actually needs to be in school. Perhaps students with home situations that make it impossible to learn from home, students who are experiencing trauma at home, and perhaps have online learning, but options for in-person supports. For example, with an educational technician or staff member overseeing the online learning. That way, teachers will be able to focus on one thing. And students who need to be in school will also be able to be in school and give a wider, a wider swath of who, who can be in school. Thank you.
And we'll go to Emily Shalas. Emily? Yep. So I think Emily was having some trouble with her Zoom. All right, so I don't see any other hands raised, so we'll close the public hearing. It's 12:03 AM, so it's August 5th now. I think it's always funny to point that out when we've been here past midnight. So appreciate that we had such a strong sound from the community and so many people speak to the board. A lot of common themes, a lot of really important questions and a lot of need for clarification as we move forward and communicate with the community. Unless we have anything else to, to share, we'll close up and we'll wish everyone a restful night. Sleep. And hopefully tomorrow you don't have too much on your plate and you can recover from tonight's long meeting. But thank you, board members, for your engagement. Certainly thank you, superintendent and staff for all your work tonight. I'm sorry to keep you up so late. Have a good one.